Good evening and welcome to the 2022 Scott County Commissioner District Three Candidates Forum, sponsored by the Shakopee Chamber and Visitors Bureau. Tonight, we are gathered at River Valley Church. My name is Michael Clemm. I'm an attorney at Helmuton Johnson and a member of the Chamber. I will serve as the moderator this evening. With us are Jody Brennan and Michael Luce. The candidates are arranged in alphabetical order. The candidates have already recorded video interviews to introduce themselves to the community, and you can see those online, so the candidates will not make opening statements this evening, and urge you to watch the videos. Tonight, candidates will be asked a series of questions. They will have 60 seconds to respond to each question. They also will have four opportunities to make rebuttal comments for 30 seconds. The first question will be directed to Ms. Brennan. What is your experience serving in elected or appointed public office?
Thank you. Currently, I am on the Shakopee City Council. I'm completing my first term. I am also on the Shakopee Public Utilities Commission, as well as the Live, Learn, and Earn Housing Committee on Housing. And previously, I was on the Curriculum Committee for the School Board, as well as the Planning Committee for the School Board. That was in the early 2000s that I did that.
Mr. Luce, what is your experience serving in public office, either as an elected official or an appointed official?
I've had a five-year stint on the Shakopee City Council, which was very eye-opening. And I had some good times there and there we had some bad times. But I found it very interesting, and that's what's pushed me to run for this, because I think we need a little more common sense at every level of government. I won't blame just the county government, but I do believe I bring some more common sense. And, excuse me. I have previously volunteered at many different things, and there's too many of them to name. And a lot of my volunteer work is done one-on-one with the people who need it, so I'm not going to divulge names, but I do a lot for people in need. I am a local -- most people call me a handyman, and I do a lot of things for people that are in need that I receive no pay for, so, thank you.
Mr. Luce, this next question will be directed to you first. What is the role of Scott County in our system of federal, state, and local government?
I'm sorry, I've got a bad echo with my other names.
Sure. The question is, what is the role of the county in the system of federal, state, and local government?
In my view, the role of the county is more localized than the state and the federal government, which is obvious. We take their directives and implement them into more practical uses. And we give them feedback so that they can provide better services to the citizens of this country, county, city, however you want to look at it, all the way down the line. Everybody works together, so we need to cooperate with each other, and I believe that so far, we're doing that very well.
Ms. Brennan, what is the role of Scott County in our system of federal, state, and local government?
Thank you. A lot of the roles that the county protects in the county is mandated by the state and by the federal government, and we're the arm that actually gets it done. There are also roles and responsibilities that we have that are not mandated, and we have a responsibility to bring those services to the residents of Scott County, like infrastructure and development. And it's our best to oversee the budgets and the tax levy to make sure that they're in line. Mr. Hossevar and the Scott County Attorney spoke before us, and he indicated that a lot of what they do is paid for by the tax levy. And I looked it up, and 88% of what that role is, is paid by the tax levy, and their role is mandated by the state and federal government.
Ms. Brennan, what are the most important duties of a county commissioner?
Most important duties is to set policies and set the budget and tax levy and provide oversight for every division in the Scott County. Like I said, a lot of those are mandated roles, but we have to make sure that they're being fiscally responsible in how they implement those policies. So I think that's us.
Mr. Luce, what are the most important duties of a county commissioner?
I believe the most important duties of any elected official is listen to the people that you are serving. You need to be able to communicate directly with them, and they need to be able to communicate directly with you. If you don't listen to the people, you're not going to be effective. Those who go into public office thinking they have all the answers are sadly mistaken. There are things that come up constantly that will change your mind on different things, give you a different opinion. You listen to the people and hear what they have to say, see what the strong points you're doing are, and see what you're lacking in. And just keep your eyes and ears open, and don't let anything get passed. Thank you.
Mr. Luce, what qualities do you have that are important for being a county commissioner?
Well, part of my background is I had five years on the city council, and I listened to people. And I also hooked up with one of the groups that built the inclusive playground down at the park down here that I believe is a crowning achievement for our city. I was very honored to be part of it. That brings children of special needs, integrated with average child that doesn't have special needs, and families that had problems with finding recreation for their children have a better place. From my understanding, that place is swamped on a decent weather day, and it's fantastic. I've been down there and seen it. It's very heartwarming to see all of that, and I was very honored to be part of it. And I would love to be part of additional things like that.
Ms. Brennan, what qualities do you have that are important for being a county commissioner?
Well, personally, I'm a listener instead of a talker. And I listen. I establish relationships with our other elected officials and other administrators in the city and administrators with other cities and townships. It's hearing what they have to say, listening to their advice, knowing that they bring a quality to the conversation that is beyond things that I can know, and also discerning what's the best way to go forward in decision makings. Yeah, I think that's it. I just think we have such a responsibility to the taxpayers and to the other organizations that we have to deal with, that we have to be well-versed in whatever you do. I also study, I read a lot, and I study and I ask questions. And I never look at just one side as the definite way to make a decision. I try to get as much information from all sides.
Ms. Brennan, as you know, the Shakopee Midwakaton Sioux Community is a federally recognized Native American tribe with inherent powers of self-governance to protect the health, safety, and welfare of its residents and members. Do you see any opportunities for greater cooperation between Scott County government and the tribe?
All the time. I know that the SMSC is a member of SCALE, and I know the people that are involved in those conversations. I've attended their functions. I think they trust me to listen to what they have to say and also be well-versed in leading the conversation to another direction. I have no problems communicating, and there's no barriers.
Mr. Luce, do you see any opportunities for greater cooperation between Scott County government and the Shakopee Midwakaton Sioux Community?
I believe right now, we have great cohesiveness between the Midwakaton Sioux community and all our local government groups. We have meetings continually to discuss different things that come up between each group and the Midwakaton. And, you know, we're dealing from a situation of less strength than what the Midwakaton have. They are federally chartered, and, you know, we're just the local government. I haven't had anything at the county level to deal with them, but when I was on the city council, I had sat in on some meetings because I wanted to see how cohesive the meetings were. I was not set to be on that board, but I was allowed to sit in and just hear how things went, and it was very informative. I think there's good cohesiveness between the two groups.
Mr. Luce, what Scott County programs have been successful, and what areas need improvement?
I think that Human Services is very successful, but they're also an area that could use improvement. There's so many people needing help with COVID and everything else that's going on in this country right now, COVID being the hugest one right now. And people are hurting. You look at the food prices in the grocery store, and you see people getting raises that don't even come close to what the groceries are going up. And people are going to need more assistance throughout the rest of the year, and I don't know how far into the future, but we need to get things more in line. And I'm willing to be able to listen to anything and everything anybody has for ideas on how we can bring things closer together. I just think the people on the lower pay end of the spectrum are really hurting, and that needs to be helped.
Ms. Brennan, what Scott County programs have been successful, and what areas need improvement?
I think they're really successful in planning and development. And, you know, they plan out their roads. I was on the Unified Transit Plan, where we were planning busing for out to 2025. Their comprehensive plan is out to 2025. They have a strategic plan that is out to 2025. I'm sorry, the comprehensive plan is 2040. And they're really good at planning, implementing, and making sure that they're working with other entities that are involved in their conversations. I think we have great staff that are well-dedicated to their jobs, human services and our jailers and our 911. They're working under extraordinary pressures with low staffing, but they're doing what they can to make it work. And that's been very important to our community.
Ms. Brennan, if you identify a problem or opportunity for improvement in the way a Scott County agency or employee are doing their work, how would you address it?
Well, I would make sure that, one, there's a policy in place that they're adhering to. And if there's not a policy in place, making sure that -- identifying if a policy needs to be and communicating that. I believe in going through the administrator to handle any issues and making sure that they understand what my concerns are and following through and making sure that they're listening to what I have to say. I am only one member of a five-member board, so I only have one voice. So it's also coordinating and communicating at the board level and the meeting dates what my concerns are and making sure that the policy is changed.
Mr. Luce, if you identify a problem or opportunity for improvement in the way a Scott County agency or employee is doing their work, how would you address it?
I'm sorry, the feedback in here is really bad for me, I'm sorry.
Okay. I can repeat the question.
Yeah, just one second.
So if you identify a problem in the way that an employee or agency is doing their job, how would you address it?
I guess education is the best thing for any group. I think if you're going to address a problem, you need to understand it 100%. And, you know, you might think there's a huge problem with something, but until you dig into it and understand everything factually, you may be under a misconception of things that there are problems with, and there probably aren't as big a problem as you think it is. I've seen that in the past with different things. And once you get the education of how things really work, you can see that most things, you know, are doing satisfactory. Everything can use help, but I don't think any of us here are going to change the world or rewrite anything. But we can change things slightly or tweak them, so.
Mr. Luce, what are the most important issues currently for the citizens or residents of Scott County?
Well, as the biggest issue throughout the country and the world, it's COVID. I mean, you know, people are dying left and right. Millions of people around the world have passed away because of COVID. We need to do more. I think they've got a handle on it, and COVID is being contained at best, but there's still people dying left and right from COVID. And we need to do better with that. You know, the way the school systems were shut down, the children are really at a stress level as far as working with their peers and dealing with them. It messed up everything, and, you know, everything needs help.
Ms. Brennan, what are the most important issues currently facing residents of Scott County?
I believe it's threefold. I believe it's employee retention. I believe it's inflation. Housing, and I guess it's fourfold, is mental health. We're having an issue trying to retain and hire qualified employees, and it's putting a stress on the other employees that are still here at Scott County. The inflation is being -- and the ability to get supplies is being greatly impacted. I heard recently that Shakopee is having an issue getting concrete, and that's putting a delay on some of the projects that we are working on, and that will also affect the cost of those supplies on the tax levy. Housing is in short supply, affordable housing and low-income housing. Mental health, I recently attended a seminar on mental health, and it's felt that 35,000 people in Shakopee are affected in some way with mental health issues. And that's out of a total population in Scott County of 152,000. Out of that 35,000, 40% of those are children.
Ms. Brennan, what are your goals for long-term business and economic development here in Scott County?
I think it's making sure that infrastructure is in place and that water and roads are getting to areas like Elko New Market and New Prague and some of the others. It's also making sure that there is employee base that our businesses can hire from and listening to the cities to make sure that they're working collaboratively together to find the best solution for the cities.
Mr. Luce, what are your goals for long-term business and economic development in Scott County?
That's a fantastic question. I'm at a loss for a real good answer. Working with the cities within Scott County is our best option at this point. Being on the city council for Shakopee for five years and seeing what groups want to come to Shakopee, I think we can try and, at the county level, tap into some of that, because they don't all come to one city. They can be spread out through the county. And there's a lot of movement from the inner city to our area, and I think that it's going to be beneficial for everybody in the county. And I think more people, there might even be some room for some added staff at the county level to deal with the influx that we hope to see.
Mr. Luce, what are your priorities regarding agriculture in Scott County?
Agriculture is the base of all of our human existence. Without the farmers, none of us are going to eat. You know, we can't allow them to fail. And from what I've seen, I used to work on a farm for a number of years, and I see consolidation. You know, you see family farms being bought up left and right, and you're seeing three and four family farms being consolidated into one. These huge, some people call them factory farms. I know a few people in the area here that have huge acreage. And hopefully, the areas out further from Shakopee, Elko, New Market, places like that, that these farms can be sustained. I know in our area here, they're being gobbled up by housing, and that's kind of sad to see, but, you know, there's got to be a place for people to live, too. So it's a tough fight between the two groups.
Ms. Brennan, what are your priorities regarding agriculture in Scott County?
I believe that agriculture should be protected. I also believe, Mr. Luce referred to the areas around Shakopee and how the agriculture has changed here. And those are decisions that were made by the property owner to sell their property for housing. So I do agree with that also. I know that there's a big interest in agriculture, where you go in and see how agriculture is done. And I know that that's an interest of the agriculture groups here in Shakopee, so that people understand how food is made. That doesn't make sense. Food is grown and produced, so that that is a continuation of an understanding of agriculture.
Ms. Brennan, do you see any areas where Scott County should either increase or decrease spending?
Well, I do believe that we need to take a look at our employee base. It's, you know, they're hiring and the jail as fast as they're turning over, so there's never a catch-up. So there's got to be a way to entice people to come to Shakopee. That's also seen in the 911 call centers. And also child protection in our case managers. They're also having a real struggle with staffing and maintaining staffing. I also think that those mandated programs that are out there, we need to make sure that they are not overburdering our employees and the responsibilities of reporting to the state. And we need to also go out and advocate to the state and make sure that we're getting proper funding for those mandated roles. Most of the funding is paid by the taxpayers, and we need to make sure that the part that the states say they're going to pay is actually paid.
Mr. Luce, are there any areas where you believe Scott County should increase or decrease spending?
I believe Scott County at this point is doing yeoman's work in their budgeting. I know right now, the county board is going through every line item in the budget at the behest of the county administrator. And they're having work sessions on this, and they are looking at every issue that there is. And I haven't been able to sit in on one of them. I've been too busy with work. I would love to be able to do it, but from what I've gotten from feedback is that they're not finding a lot of excess spending, but they're finding a little bit here and there. But as far as the money needed for COVID and families that are in need, it's only going to go up. The need is always going to be great, and it's getting greater. You know, we just got a wage increase on the low end that didn't even cover the price increase on groceries.
Mr. Luce, what are the public safety challenges facing Scott County? What are the public safety challenges in Scott County?
Well, as with most of the nation, fentanyl is a big problem. And, you know, that encompasses so much of our public safety people. That, you know, I've done ride-alongs with the county, the city, and the Minneapolis PD, and I've seen firsthand on what happens out there. And it's really scary. It's amazing that they do find people that want to go into law enforcement with what's going on out there as far as the drug use and other crimes. And it's -- they all need to be commended, and that's all I can say. They're doing a great job, but can always do better.
Ms. Brennan, what are the public safety challenges facing Scott County?
Currently, it's the employees, getting the employees to do their job. You know, our 911 call center is very limited in the amount of people that they have working, as well as our sheriff's office and our jails. And it's getting qualified people back into those roles. I also think that the cities would like to see ride-along how mental health professionals that go out on calls, and that can only be done with coordination with the other cities and the sheriffs to figure out how that's going to be done and how that's going to be funded. We also have issues with our software program on the calls that, when 911's calls are coming in, a lot of it is manually recorded, at least on the fire side. And that's a software program that needs to be looked at and reevaluated. That would increase the calls and make sure that people are getting out to the cities and the issues right away.
Our time is running out. Anyone whose questions have not been answered should ask the candidates this evening, after this debate, or contact their campaign offices. You can find more information about the candidates at the Chamber's website, shakopee.org. Each candidate will now have one minute for their closing statement, beginning with Jody Brennan.
Thank you very much. I want to thank this Chamber of Commerce and Mike Luce, and also our previous candidate, Ibrahim Mohammed, for taking an interest in the role of what it is to be a county commissioner. I feel that I have qualified. I'm a soft spokesperson, but I do my research, and I'm well-versed in the issues. I make sure that I am looking at all sides of an issue before I make a decision, and I'm making sure that I am listening to the people who are qualified to hold that position so that they can make a decision. I work for the residents of Shakopee. It's only a portion of Shakopee that District Three is in, but I work for all the people in Shakopee, just as I do now. Now, I have to also balance the fact that I'll be making decisions that are out in the greater area of Scott County. I'm excited to be able to run and to provide my knowledge and understanding and my compassion and passion for this role. Thank you.
Mr. Luce?
Yes, I would like to thank my opponent also. She's done four years or approaching four years on the city council. I was lucky enough to get a fifth year because of the change in the calendar for voting, and I found it very enlightening, and it was very educational. But I've also, some things that I like to do is find out firsthand. Like I said, I did a ride-along with the police chief in town here. I've done ride-alongs with the county sheriff's department, and I was also privileged to go on a ride-along with Minneapolis homicide. I enjoy doing things firsthand. I don't really care to get someone else's view, because everybody's view is different. You can see the same thing, and your input and what you derive from it is going to be different. But I do get personally involved in everything. Like I said, the playground that we built, I guess my time is up, so.
As we close this part of our discussion, please remember that the views expressed in tonight's debate are those of the candidates, not those of the Chamber and Visitors Bureau. The Chamber sponsors this event as a service to the community and has gone to extraordinary lengths to ensure the objectivity of this forum. The Chamber does not endorse any candidate. Instead, we seek to provide the information that you need to make informed choices when you vote. Thank you to the audience this evening and to River Valley Church for hosting our event. On behalf of the Shakopee Chamber and Visitors Bureau, thank you to all the candidates. We appreciate your time and your service to our community. Election Day is Tuesday, November 8th. Please remember to vote.